Good evening. The June 23rd, 2016 Longview City Council meeting is now called to order. Tonight, our prayer and pledge will be led by Dr. John Hatch, interim pastor of Oakdale Heights Baptist Church.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank you for the privilege of calling upon your name in prayer. We thank you that you are a prayer-hearing and a prayer-answering God. You are the sovereign Lord of this universe. We have no other God above you, no other God before you, no other God beside you. You are our God. Your word tells us to pray for those who govern us. We give thanks for the elected officials of this body. We express gratitude for the distinguished men and women who serve the citizens of this great city. Give them your guidance in all their deliberations. Grant them Christ-like compassion as they speak for those who cannot speak for themselves. Bless them with visionary leadership and extraordinary courage in the cause of righteousness, justice, and truth. We pray for our mayor, council members of our city government, and all of those who serve to advance the vital interests of our city. Grant them health, strength, courage, and wisdom as they discharge their duties. Our Father, we pray for a great spiritual awakening in our city and our nation. Help us to understand that the answers to the multiple problems that plague our land do not rest to the right or to the left, but above. Thank you for hearing our prayer as we make it in the strong name of Jesus Christ, your Son and our Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in saying the pledge to our flag. Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Tonight is a historic event. Anytime we have an election that affects this council, it affects our city. And tonight, we're here to say goodbye to a longtime member and to welcome a new member to this council. Sidney, we're gonna miss ya.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Allen was elected City Council in May 2007 and has served nine years as representative for District 6. Mr. Allen has lived in Longview since 1969, and prior to City Council, he served with the Planning and Zoning Commission, has been involved in a variety of community initiatives and efforts. Known for their generosity, Mr. Allen and his wife, Hannah Lee, have been major contributors to significant projects all across the community, including the soon-to-open animal shelter, the Laterna University Belcher Center, and the Allen Student Center, which is named in their honor. Throughout Sidney's tenure as a council member, he has been a detail-oriented advocate for good management, has been actively engaged with the city manager to begin and discuss issues as well as everyday operations. Sidney, you came here right after I left the council, and I missed eight of those nine years. But just watching your performance, watching your dedication to this council, this city, it's inspiring. You bring so much energy and leadership to this community. You've represented District 6 in such an honorable way. You've always been an advocate for our community and for what's best. You've never had personal agendas. You've always done what is right. And that's all that can be asked of someone who's an elected official, is to just to do what is right. Put aside your own personal beliefs, put the city first, the people that brought you here, the people that put you in this office, and you've always done that. And you've done it for three successive terms, which shows that the citizens have appreciated what you've done. They've re-elected you three times, and it's been an honor and a privilege to be here and sit with you. I learned from you. I look to you for guidance, and I appreciate all that you've done for our community, Sidney. You're a champion for our community, and this council will sorely miss you. We hope that you will continue to be involved. I know you'll be vacationing, as you should. You deserve every minute of your time off, you and Hannah Lee. But we really, really, as a community, just wanna say thank you from the bottom of our hearts for all that you are, all that you've done, all that you've meant to this community, Sidney. It's been a real pleasure and a real honor to be a part of this with you.
Thank you.
This is but a small token that just shows your service to our community, Sidney. And once again, is Ms. Hannah Lee here?
No.
Okay, she should be standing right here with you because, as you all know, anytime you're elected official, you're subject to things that affect not only you, but they affect your family. And she stood with you for all these years, number one, I don't understand why. But especially when you... She's so... Your better half, Sidney. But especially your time on the council. It's so wonderful to see a spouse who supports, as she has, and this is just as much for her as this for you. But happy trails to you, buddy. It's been a pleasure. It's been an honor.
Well, I just wanna say thank you, and I wanna say thank you to all the people in Longview. I've not only tried to represent District 6, but I've tried to represent anybody that had a concern, or that had a problem, or had a voice, they wanted to speak about things in Longview. Again, I wanna say thank you to the excellent staff we have here. We've got a wonderful staff. They always try to work with City Council. I wanna say thank you to them and all the people that are citizens of Longview. Thank you.
A little unusual. Council, everybody come up here. David, come on. These are times where it deserves a little extra. Nine years is a long time, buddy. Everybody come around. Okay. Yes, okay. Thank you.
Are you gonna shake it?
Yes. Yeah. Hold on. This goes with you, my friend. That's right. Give him a bottle of water. Here's your box for yours. As Mr. Allen vacates his seat, please join me one more time in giving him a round of applause for his service in the community. At this time, we will have the oath of office to our new council member-elect for District 6, Ms. Ballinger.
I state your name.
Steve Pirtle.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of councilmember District 6.
Of councilmember District 6.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the city of Longview.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Glad to have you on the council table. I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to recognize some of the people in our audience that have been here before and done the things that we're doing right now. I saw Mr. Frost was here. Mr. Frost, please stand. Mr. Frost faithfully served District 4 for nine years as his council representative and has done such a wonderful job. We have former Mayor Murray Moore in the audience. Mr. Moore, please stand. Mr. Moore served as our mayor for many years back when I was on the council. And I also wanna say thank you to Pat O'Rear, Pat's in the audience, and to Karen Maines, who both put themselves out there in this election and worked hard, had good campaigns, willing to serve this community. And that's a testament to good people wanting to do the right thing. And I have no doubt that whoever would've been in this chair would've done an excellent job, and we appreciate you, Pat, and Karen. Thank you for the jobs you all did and for your willingness to serve. It would've been a pleasure either way. Thank you all very much. Okay, employee recognition. Sorry, one time. Count it, once. That's it, last one. Personal joke, y'all will get it in a minute. I said okay again. Not gonna happen again. It's not gonna happen again. Fleet Services. Fleet Service with a staff of 11 provides for the maintenance and repair of 128 trailers, 325 light vehicles, including 139 emergency vehicle units, 44 pieces of off-road equipment, and 105 medium and heavy-duty vehicles, including 32 emergency services units. Fleet Services serves the citizens of Longview by providing vehicle support services to the other departments of the city. Departments like fire, police, and public works are kept on the road and serving our citizens because of Fleet Service dedication to providing the best possible service to their customers. Fleet Service continues to earn the ASE Automotive Service Excellence Blue Seal Certification each year due to their insistence on hiring and training knowledgeable and experienced staff. Tonight, we have... Please come up. John Kiesler, Michael Crowley, Joe Duncan, Chris Hines, Walter Reed, Samantha Tate, Kelly Williams. Unable to attend are Virgil Bolter, Craig Crawford, James Nelson, and Adam Taylor. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the hardest-working crew you're gonna see. These guys and ladies keep... Do y'all know how many Fleet Service vehicles we have? I don't. Do y'all? It's a bunch. It is a ton of vehicles that they keep moving and on the streets, and over 400, I'm sure, right? Imagine if we didn't have a crew that would take care of the problems that we have. You know, cars are always breaking down, there's always something going on. These are the men and women that take care of those problems on a daily basis to keep us moving and keep things in our city going forward. We really appreciate what you do, from keeping our public safety vehicles intact to everything, from the smallest to the greatest. It's all important, and y'all do such a great job. I just wanna take a moment to thank you, another citizen of Longview, I wanna thank you because without you all, we come to an absolute dead stop. So thank you very much. Y'all are very well appreciated in all that you do. One more round of applause, please. Next, we have citizen comment. I have two speaker cards. Ms. Sheila Ann Maxi.
Yes, to the council and to the city manager and the mayor and to the attendees here at the meeting. First of all, I would like to say, last year, I had some problems in my neighborhood. I live in Tempetary Subdivision in District Number 3, which is represented by Councilwoman Kasia Williams. We have some problems with some of the people in the neighborhood not complying with the city ordinance related to their pets. I made a suggestion to the Animal Control Department last year about having meetings to, in the districts, to make them, to inform them on their responsibility for their pets. And one example is making sure that if their pets are not enclosed in a fence and they have them in the front yard, that they have them on a leash tied to something where they can't get aloose. Sometimes, I walk to the bus stop, and I have a neighbor that has a pet, and he sits at the end of the driveway, okay? He has refused to put that pet on a leash. Then, some of the other animals are getting out of the fence, and some of these animals are like pit bulls, and we can't really walk in our park like we used to because animals may come from, like, out of the wooded areas. The Recreation Department was supposed to put a fence across the side where the wooded area is, and there have been incidents where people were walking and dogs came from the wooded area. Then, the next thing I would like to say, and Dr. Hatch, I think his prayer was good and on time, and I'd like to also say that the city of Longview is supposed to serve the citizens of Longview. There are six districts. Each representative for the district is responsible to its constituency, and there must be parity in the allocation of funds for each district, as well as there must be parity in employment and promotions and... Employment and promotions and wages. And I'd also like to say that there are six votes. There are six council members, and there are six votes. And so, I think that in order for the council to be in the right direction, then each council member has to ensure that the council policies and procedures should be carried out. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Maxi. We enjoyed the MPO meeting as well this morning. Thank you for visiting with us twice today.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Next, we have Ms. Laura Hill. Oh, I'm sorry. Hold on, excuse me. Did you have a speaker card?
I'd like to say something. I mean, it's on me to say something.
Just one second, ma'am. You're welcome to speak. Please state your name, your address, and please fill a card out when you're through, okay?
All right.
Name, address, and then you speak, then fill it out when you're through, okay?
Okay. My name's Deetra Beckworth, and I live on High Street. And I wanted to say something about 2014, voted for Kasia Williams. Should've been said this. I wanted to go to the Recreation Center to vote for her, but I met up with Philip Burns, who also was trying to run for Justice of the Peace at the time. And I had made up my mind what was going on. I didn't know what was gonna happen to me. I wasn't trying to get caught up in everything that was happening around me. So I didn't know what to look forward to or anything, and I started looking, listening to Channel 5, and started coming up with things. And I had an idea to come to the City Council meeting and to get involved, and that's the only way I could get involved instead of getting caught up with all the noise that was around me. And so, I started coming to the City Council meeting, coming up with ideas to keep myself motivated and keep myself moving, and everyone around me. And even though negative things were being said, I was still gonna press on and do something else. And I was trying to, I was wanting to get things together with, and everything, but nothing ever came together. So I had prayed about it and wanted everything to work out, you know? Wanted everything to work out, even though it didn't work out. And I wasn't gonna let nobody loo... Help me to lose what I was wanting to do. And even though I wasn't that much involved before, I still was going to go ahead and just do, you know what I'm saying? See if there needed to be help or volunteer work, you know, around town or anything. And I just wanted to let everybody know I appreciate them, even though, you know, in the midst of all the negativity and stuff, appreciate them in some kind of way, you know, or whatever. And Kasia Williams, I'm glad, I'm sorry, I wanted to get to know you better. I actually wanted you to come around the neighborhood when I was living over there and get involved a little bit. But since we didn't, that didn't stop me from speaking good about you and thinking about you, whatever. And, but, thank you all.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else who would like to speak that doesn't have a speaker card? Very well. Ms. Laura Hill, you have a speaker card.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. This is Allison Dominguez, and this is Katie. And we are here tonight to encourage everyone to attend the city's fireworks and freedom celebration on July 4th at Maude Cobb. The fun begins at 11:00 a.m. with tons of things to do, including free entertainment, a motorcycle parade, a car and truck show, children's activities, lots of vendors, and of course, the fireworks. This year's headliner is 10-time Grammy winner, "Asleep at the Wheel," and they will perform immediately following the official opening ceremonies, which are set to begin at 7:15 on the main stage. New this year are a patriotic pup fashion show, hot dog or weenie dog races, and a tut-tos and troops pageant for young children. For information on all these activities, please go to longviewtexas.gov. Fireworks and freedom celebration. We have registration information for the contests and all sorts of wonderful things happening on July 4th, so please join us. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. You didn't mention the mayor's tent.
I kinda assumed you'd do that during your comments.
Okay, just checking. Just checking. All right.
Thank you, Katie.
Thank you all very much. Next, we have our public safety update. Chief Bishop.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. Mayor, I'd like to also echo the sentiments on Fleet Services. I'd like to thank them for the wonderful job that they do keeping our cars on the street. They do a, they do a great job. I'd like to invite everybody on Wednesday, June 29th, at 10:00 a.m. in our Roy Stone Training Room. We're gonna have a retirement reception for Sergeant Larry Webb. Larry has over 20 years of service with the department, served in many different capacities within the department, and he's gonna be retiring. That's gonna be a bad thing for us, but it's also gonna be a good thing for us because Larry was elected sheriff of Upsher County, and he's gonna retire at the end of June, take a few months off before he's sworn in as sheriff. So we'd like to invite you to come bid Sergeant Webb a farewell. Also, July 27th through July 1st, the Police Department's gonna have a summer camp at Foster Middle School. This is open to any junior high student that would like to attend. It's free of charge. It's Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 12:00. And our school resource officers will be putting this on, and they'll have a lot of different activities for the kids. So anybody interested in participating in that can contact Officer Robert Bryan at Also, last week, we finished up our second women's safety course. We had another full house at that course. We'll be offering our last one for the year, beginning September 19th through the 24th, from 6:00 to 9:00 p.m. at Maude Cobb. And they can contact Officer Christie Bryan at 237-1199 for anyone that might be interested in attending the safety seminar. I'd also like to take a minute to inform our citizens about three different types of fraudulent activity or scams that are currently occurring that were... We have some reports that were working, but they continue to be, they continue to be So I'd like to provide just a short, brief overview of what this type of activity is so that individuals could be aware of it. Usually, the driveway scam or home repairs, the homeowner is usually unsolicited. They usually go door-to-door, and they claim that they have just finished a job, have some extra material, and they're in the area and can offer a reduced price for their services. Once they receive a down payment, then the job is partially completed or not completed at all. And they tend to use high-pressure sales tactics, and these types of activity usually target the elderly. So I'd like to encourage those that need those type of repairs to seek out the company of their choice to do those repairs. The other one that's going around is the IRS scam. You may have, may have heard a little bit about this. This is usually an unsolicited phone call to a residence, and the resident is usually threatened with arrest or jail time for not paying their taxes. And usually during this conversation, there's a demand for personal information or some type of an immediate payment where the individual then gives their personal information, their banking information, to the individual, and then after that, you know, they, they get the money. Just so everybody knows, the IRS does not contact individuals by phone. They will contact them by, by letter and request that the individual contact the IRS. And then the last one, of course, is the lottery scams. These are unsolicited phone calls, letters, or emails where they notify an individual that they have won some type of big prize, but in order to collect that prize, they have, they have to send in a certain amount of money to be able to receive the check. And then, once the money is sent, nothing more is received. Unfortunately, we have a lot of individuals that fall victim to that each year, and like I say, we've already started to see some of these cases, so I just thought I'd like to inform everybody real quick so that they would hopefully recognize it if they were in that situation. So with that, if there's any questions?
I don't know about questions, but I sure feel better that IRS scam had me worried because I've been called three times. Okay, thank you, sir.
Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thanks for the opportunity to update you on a few things that have been going on in the Fire Department since we last met. First off, we're honored to have been recognized by Region 4 of the Child Welfare Advisory Board, which is a part of the Texas Department of Family Protective Services. They were basically honoring us for the work that we do annually with our annual Christmas toy drive and our summer hot camps that we put on for the children in the community. They're to receive the award up in New Boston, I believe it was last Friday, where Aisha Robinson, our Fair Education Specialist, Captain Tommy Daniels, he's the one that really coordinates and pulls off the toy drive, and one of our Assistant Chiefs, David Bates. We're very honored to have been recognized, and we're certainly part to be, play that role in the community and provide good things for the children that are out there. Just a quick reminder, we do have one of our summer hot camps that's coming up. It's actually the one that I'm trying to promote here, is for Saturday, July the 9th. If you have a school-aged child that is interested in maybe exploring a career in the fire service, this is a one-day camp. It will happen on a Saturday, and there's plenty of activities for them to participate in. So any interest in that, please call Fire Administration at 237-1210 and get them registered for that. We certainly want as many attendees as we can get. I'm also pleased to tell you that we've wrapped up our annual process for our Muscular Dystrophy Association Fill the Boot campaign. And thanks to the generosity of the citizens of Longview, we were able to raise $64,000-plus dollars to put back into muscular dystrophy that will directly impact the people that are affected by that in our local community. So we were pleased about that. It's always overwhelming to see how the community comes behind and supports this event. And I also wanna put a quick plug in to thank them for their patience because we were out there for three different Saturdays, and I realized there was some traffic congestion and there were some issues, and we're certainly gonna review our processes. I just wanna assure the public of that after, after that point, but we certainly appreciate the support. It was, it was just over the top. We have a couple of retirements coming up. We're losing a little over 50 years of experience in the Fire Department. The first one I'm gonna tell you about is Battalion Chief Russell Marshall. Chief Marshall has been with the department just shy of 29 years. We hate to lose both of these guys. Chief Marshall is one of the people that mentored me early on in my career. He accepted a job with the state of Texas. So we... He accepted a job with the state of Texas, so we look forward to good things with him down the road and continuing to build a relationship. He's actually going to go work for the Texas Division of Emergency Management. So he's taken a lot of what he's learned here, and he's going to go put it to use at the state level. So it's certainly good to have those kinds of connections in those kinds of places when bad things are happening around here. He'll have a retirement ceremony on June the 28th, next Tuesday, and it's certainly open to the public, it's at our Fire Department Training Center, and it'll be from 9:00 to 11:00. So we encourage anyone that's ever had any encounters with Chief Marshall to attend and wish him well. The second one is Captain Stoney Stone. Stoney's been with the department just around 28 years, and he's going to be retiring. His last shift will be on July the 7th. We're going to honor him with a retirement reception from 2:00 to 4:00, again at the Training Center on that day. These guys are going to leave some big shoes to fill, but I'm encouraged, because I know the quality of people that we have coming up in the ranks of the department, that they'll be able to step in eventually with a little bit of time and fill right in where these guys are leaving off. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Chief, I just want to commend you all on your Fill the Boot campaign, $64,000, and your technique of blocking traffic till they gave money works very well. Keep it up. If people want the traffic to flow smoothly, they'll fork it out a little bit quicker, okay? I think that was brilliant, and I commend you, and can't wait till next year.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, sir. We are now to action items. Consider a resolution to apply for an Except Fiscal Year 2016 Justice Assistant Graham Grant for $34,528. Ms. Fuller.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to ask for you to consider a resolution for us to apply for the 11th year for the Justice Assistance Grant through, it's a federal grant through the Bureau of Justice of Assistance. These funds will be used to support Partners in Prevention's East Texas Anti-Trafficking Team and some of the expenses that we have with National Night Out and crime prevention efforts. A portion of these funds will also be shared with the Longview Police Department to purchase bicycles and some headsets that they are needing. We are already predetermined, the amount is predetermined by the federal government, so what we'll be asking for is $34,528. That's what we have been allocated for our city. There are no matching funds required for this grant, and the application is due next week, so we'd like to proceed with your permission.
Any comments from Ms. Fuller? We have a motion.
Would you approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Fuller.
Thank you.
Next, we consider a resolution for an interlocal agreement between the City of Longview and other cities. Mr. Rosa.
Hi. Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard, thank you. On May 24th council session, when we presented our fee schedule, we also discussed that we'd be bringing before you the sheltering contracts or the interlocal agreements between the City of Longview, Gray County, Glade Water, White Oak, and Kilgore. Tonight, you have these contracts that have been considered and signed by these jurisdictions, and we're asking for your review and, and favor upon them.
Questions from Mr. Rosa. I have a question. Tell me, Mr. Rosa, what are our contract, what are the, the fees that we're contracting? Do we know that?
We do. The fees were established prior to me arriving, but it, it was between the city manager's office and the leaders in each of those communities in their city manager, mayor's office. For the first year until September 30th of this year, it's going to be $87 per animal, and then it will go up sequentially right around $25 each year, so for the contract year of 2017, each of the jurisdictions will be paying $114 per animal for sheltering services.
And are these, are these, are we to the point where now we're going out to seek those contracts? Are they already really ready to sign contracts with us?
They have already signed on their end. We are considering them tonight for your signature, or the city manager's signature.
Fantastic. Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We need that.
Thank you.
That would be the only comment I would make. I was really happy to see the fee structure looks like by the time we get to 2019, we should be recouping most of our costs per animal, so great job to whoever did all that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Would you approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Consider a resolution to publish and post the fiscal year 2016-17 PHA Plan HUD 45-day comment period. Ms. Marshall.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, council, Mr. Willard. This is our request, our annual request to post and publish the availability of our fiscal year 2016, 2017 housing annual plan and our administrative plan. This is a HUD mandated 45-day commenting period, so I'm requesting your approval to begin that process.
Any question for Ms. Marshall? We have a motion.
Would you approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Marshall. We consider a resolution to, or consider approval of the following minutes, May 12th and May 24th. Ms. Ballinger. Thank you, Ms. Ballinger. We have a motion.
Would you approve? Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We usually do it during, during, during consent agenda, but it's been on the consent agenda, so that's why it's on an action item, right? I knew it. Thank you. We are now to items of community interest. Ms. Snoddy.
Great, good evening, everyone. First of all, I would like to welcome Mr. Pertle to the city council. It's great not being the new person anymore. So welcome. Also, as a reminder, we would like for you to please join us on Saturday, June 25th, at the Boys and Girls Club, 610 Garfield, for the beautiful Southside Festival. Guys, we're planning on having a good time, we do need your support, and we welcome you to come out and just join us. Thank you.
This is about a Southside Renaissance, and I see two of our community partners, Mr. Dale Perkins and Mr. Clay Perkins, pastor, I'm sorry, in the audience, and, and this is really going to be a blessing for our community, more of a Southside or South Longview Renaissance. So, and I got that term from Mr. John, who is sitting over there, a good friend too, John Smith, but it, it will be as such, and we really welcome your support, and our mayor is going to be there to read a proclamation, and we are just fired up. Everything is free, God is good, and he is right on time. Now, I need to say something else, Mayor.
Please, Ms. Williams.
I, I need to address something. Ms. Maxie, is she still here? Ms. Sheila? Thank you so much for your comments. I'd like to add that over the last year, Chris Kemper, our Animal Control Officer under the advisement of Alicia Kidd-Brooks, who is the manager of that department, we've been picking up numerous animals. I encourage you to call me, because I live in Temple Terrace, 903-431-5656, because sometimes, when they're loose, if we need to get somebody there immediately, we can get someone there, okay? Several of the ladies that walk in the park have also contacted me, and this has been an ongoing issue, but they've been pleased thus far, so thank you for bringing that to my attention, and we'll make sure we stay on top of that. Ms. Beckworth, you heard my number, if you need to call me, feel free, I'm just a phone call away. Last but not least, the family of Annie Jones. We lost a young lady in our community on Sunday. When I moved back home, she was one of the first young people that I met. She was involved with the Youth Action Committee through Partners in Prevention. She cared then, and she cared and volunteered and did in our community until she passed away this past Sunday. And there is nothing like a servant's heart, and there is nothing like a servant's heart in a young person. So I want to let that family know that we are praying for you. We are a praying council, and we are believers led by our mayor, and we believe that this too shall pass, but just know that our hearts are with you during the loss of our dear Annie. Thank you.
Amen. Thank you, Ms. Williams. Ms. Ishihara.
I don't have anything.
Mr. Wright.
I just have a question. When is the, the Southside event Saturday?
Saturday.
I know, Saturday.
We'll be there, okay? Just calling to hang out.
Setups start at 11:00, David.
6 o'clock in the morning.
Yeah, we need you there.
Mr. Pertle, welcome.
This is your time for, for comments.
Okay, this is probably the most I'll ever talk. I want to thank everybody that put up with us for five months in this election, especially my two opponents, one of them I can see right now. They, they held a upright and outstanding election. They, there was no name-calling or anything like that. I want to thank all the people, and there's numerous ones in here that helped me, they really helped me. And there's two people sitting in one part of it that I really want to thank, and he kind of kept me up a lot. He called me and kept me up going a lot. And then there's one person in particular that she made the whole thing work, and I owe her immensely for that. And the last person I really want to thank is my wife, because I think most of the people that go through some of this, your spouses go through it with you, and we have our ups and downs here, and she was kind of a rock for me, so she kept me going. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Pertle, and thank you, Melanie, for being here and, and engaging with us as well. Thank you for all that you are. We have some items here as part of the Longview Library's Summer Reading Program, Chimp Haven: A New Beginning, will be at Maughob Wednesday, June 29th, at 10:30 and 11:30. For a full list of our library's summer programs, go to longviewtexas.gov/library. As Ms. Hill state, 4th of July Freedom and Fireworks Celebration, Maughob Adventure Center, gates open 11:00 a.m., and admission is free. I'll talk about the morning in a minute. Also, there'll be free concerts, music on two stages all day long, featuring Walker McGuire at 6:00 p.m. and Asleep at the Wheel at 8:00 p.m., fireworks at 9:30. We'll have a mayor's celebration tent on the 4th of July across the main stage. For tickets, go to longviewtexas.gov/mayorjulie4. This is going to be an amazing fireworks celebration, as it is every year. If you haven't participated, you should. Bring your family, bring your children, bring anyone that you want to bring. Let me assure you, the city staff goes to an incredible amount of time-consuming work to make this happen, and it's going to be fantastic. We're going to celebrate our country's heritage, we're going to celebrate our community, we're going to celebrate our citizens. Please come join us, it's going to be a blast, it's going to be a lot of fun. Come to the tent, it's $60 for a ticket. This gives you a lot, a lot of things, food, beverages, designated parking, it's going to be a lot of fun, I look forward to seeing you there. Come join us, and thank you, city staff, for everything that you all are doing. This could never, ever, ever happen without the dedication we have from our city staff. We have some upcoming events, go to our, go to our website at longviewtexasevents.com, our community calendar. We've had the Longview Summer Boat Show, the J.C.'s Trade Days, and Movies on the Plaza. We have some upcoming events. We have the Kiras Malin Concert at Longview Museum of Fine Arts on Friday, June 24th, the Juneteenth Black Rodeo on Saturday, June 25th, the Texas Shakespeare's Festival on June the 30th, and the Art Walk on July the 7th. Now, the Juneteenth Black Rodeo, let me just say, Juneteenth is on June 19th, it's not on June 25th. Now, how do I know that?
It's your birthday.
That's right. That's right. So come, come join us. You know, this calendar, like I said many, many times, this allows us as a community to post things where everybody can see it and know what to do. So if you have an event, please post it on our calendar so we can read it, we'll, we'll acknowledge you during council meeting, so people understand what's going on. I appreciate this calendar, it really helps our community. Survey time. Okay, before the survey, what are all you Cavs Who people out there, remember that survey we had, who's going to win the NBA championship, and what one was Cavs Who? The Cavs came back, didn't they? What a great series, what a great, what a great NBA Finals that was. Okay, we've been asking a few surveys about the homeless population, and I'm going to continue this because we're, we're going to continue this as a city, we're going to do something, we're going to make a difference here. So what type of tasks could you see homeless Longview residents doing in exchange for food, clothing, shelter, or bus passes? Check as many as you want or write other. It's, it's, it's amazing how this survey turned out. 63% said weed flower beds, 78% said assist at the animal shelter, 64% said set up tables a month. These are just things that we could possibly do, and there were 54% that had other comments, and the other comments are an extremely valuable resource. And once again, I will try to share those with you all, because the, the other comments are very insightful. Where this came from is, is I have met with some of the homeless shelter mission folks, and we want, we want to try to make a difference, we want to try to do something. And do we know what to do? No. Do we know where to start? No. But we have to start somewhere. And something like this, as I see it, everybody needs worth, everybody needs value, everybody needs to be felt as if they make a difference. And I want, I want our homeless population to have value and have purpose. It's not, it's not our city's place to set up a job for them, it's not. Too many variables. We can't, we cannot, we cannot accomplish that. But we can start one day at a time. We can start with able bodies that want to and need to have purpose, and if we can find a way to assist in this, then I think we should. I think we, as a community, we as a city, we as a society, owe that to the, to those that are less fortunate. And if we can find a way, we're going to find a way. That's a promise. It's not a guarantee, because there's an if involved in that, but if we can find a way, we're going to find a way to engage those that need engaging. Now, understand, please don't leave here saying we're going to do this with every homeless person. We're not. This is not a one-size-fits-all. Not every homeless person is capable of doing even a daily task, because there are factors involved. There are mental issues, there are drug issues, there are socioeconomic issues, but there are also issues where some people are capable, they just need a break. And if we can give a break to one person, we win. So we are going to try to find a way to give a break, to do something for someone who needs it, because if I was in that position, I would hope you all would do something to help me. So we're going to try. I don't know how successful we will be, but I know we will be unsuccessful if we don't try. So we will give it a shot, and we'll see what this, what comes of this. We have, there's a lot of planning that's going to be involved in this, there's a lot of detail that will be, needed to be checked out, a lot of organizations that will need to be contacted and, and brought into this. This isn't a one-person, one-area, one-mission thing, this is a community-wide project, and, and we're going to undertake this in some form or fashion. I just don't know what it'll be, but I'm looking to each one of you all for help, because we can all pitch in with this. You know, we, we assign council representatives to a lot of things. Each of y'all have tasks that you all do, boards that you sit on, groups that you are liaisons to. I, I'm counting on each one of you all to participate in this. This is not going to be a one council person or a two council person deal. This is going to be all council representatives, our city manager, our city staff, we're going to find a way to make a difference, and we're going to, we're going to do something. So bear with me, but know that I feel this is our obligation, and I feel it's something that we're going to accomplish. So, thank you for all that took a survey, thank you for the wonderful other answers that we got, and some of them are so specific and so insightful. I wish I had that kind of insight, but I don't, because these are coming from people that have lived this and have experience with it, which I don't, and I don't profess to. I don't sit here in judgment because I can't walk in those shoes, and, and I thank God that I don't walk in those shoes, but I also thank God that he's given us the ability to help those that walk in those shoes, and we're going to do that, we're going to find a way. So thank you all for that. Now, let's lighten it up a little bit. This weekend, I went with friends and family to race go-karts at G-Force, which was awesome, by the way. Who do you think was the fastest racer in this group?
What did you?
Well, let me read you the percentages, and I'm going to tell you who really won. I'm going to give you every percentage, because this is quite funny. Former Mayor Murray Moore, 8%, not a fan club, Murray. Kelly Mack, my wife, 19%, and by golly, if you look at her driving record, she should have won this. Ask my insurance agent. Andy Mack, 20%, which by far was the highest vote, thank you all. Ben Mack, my younger brother, who's a giant in a little bitty go-kart, funniest thing you've ever seen in your life, 13%. His little tiny, tiny innocent wife, Julie, 12%. Alice Stanley, 3%. Monty Stanley, 4%. Quentin Woods, 8%. And Julie Woods, 14%, which really surprised me. I would have, that's who I voted for. Okay, I said it again, but that's the reason I said, okay. Here are your results. Oh, they're not up there, what do you know? I won! Actually, I did not win, I didn't win. I thought they were going to put the results up there and really catch me on that one. I did not win. And the women's category, little bitty innocent Julie Mack was a beast out there. Do not get in front of her, do not get sideways, she will T-bone you and not even think twice about it. She will T-bone you and not even think twice about it. On the men's side, Monty Stanley.